With liberty and justice for all. And first up is our program review with the Delano Education Foundation.
Hang on here a minute. That looks like Hattie.
It sure does.
How old is this picture? That looks like Hattie.
Sure looks like it.
We need a new picture. All right. Get started. I'm Natasha Warner. I am the Chair of the Delano Education Foundation, formerly known as Deepi. And so I'm here today just to share an update with you on some of the things that we've been working on now that we've gotten the group back together, and where we're going, and just give you a little insight into that, and just take any questions or any feedback that you have as we develop and move along the way. We were talking about the picture. Some of you will recognize some kids there that have grown quite a bit since then, so, you know, it's kind of fun to look at, but in front of the old rock, so. All right, so the Delano Education Foundation, formerly known as Deepi, don't have a logo yet, so I just use the school logo. But the most exciting thing that we've done kind of most recently is develop a mission statement. And so this is really important as we think about what are our guiding principles, what are the things we want to stand for, and how do we want to use that to determine what decisions we want to make about how we want to support the school district and the community. So the mission statement is to inspire a spirit of community by investing in opportunities for all students today and tomorrow to achieve academic and individual excellence. And this is be our guiding principle. We'll develop additional tenants and pillars beyond this, but this is kind of the overarching goal and is an objective of what we'll be looking at. We really want to tether to community. We want to tether to students that are here both today as well as our future. And so we hope to do a nice job with the body and all of that. We restarted up the group in October, last October. So for those who've been around for a while, we took, we were at the helm of Lynette Kramp, and I took over after that. And we had a lot of momentum going into kind of the pre-COVID years, but, you know, COVID happened, and we lost a lot of members of our board to graduating kids and kids that were getting older. And so it was an opportunity for us post-COVID to get things restarted again, post-reparendum, all of that, to say, how do we infuse some more life back into this, reinvigorate it. I'm super excited to have a really engaged group of people here of, you know, a wide variety of backgrounds and ages of kids to help us drive forward this initiative. So there are the names left there. We have some committees that we're also working towards building out as we continue on around fundraising, social media, technology, and so really trying to rebuild what we had and enhance what we really think is the opportunities are. So what have we been doing so far? So since October, we have developed the mission statement and building our key objectives. We've been assessing the fund allocation that we have out there. It's a little stagnant, and so we're just taking another fresh look at it, say, what do we like, what do we want to change, what do we want to update, taking a new perspective. We've been doing some work to benchmark against other foundations and other school districts that are similar to ours in a similar place as us. And we most recently had a listening session with district leaders to understand the needs across the district and how we might align some of those needs with the things that we want to bring forward to the community. And then where are we going? So what's next is, the Board recently approved a disbursement of $10,000 in funds towards initiatives to support 2023 and 2024 school year. We really want to take some of the money that we've built up and put it into the school and to the community to show what it is, to get some excitement around it. We think it could serve as some good marketing and some good, kind of some good information for people to say, yes, I want to be part of that. I want to either invest with time, money, or resources down the road. And so we think that will be a nice, a nice kind of kickoff for us next year. We're working on relaunching the website. The website broke, and so we're working on relaunching it, but maybe it's a blessing in disguise so that we can restart with new initiatives, new perspective. And that will include ways for us to fundraise and for people to contribute online. And so we think that could be something we also want to launch with in the school year. And then, like I said, launching with the community during the new school year at open houses, et cetera, to build awareness and support. And so we may even find a few summer events where we can get out in the community, start talking about what we are. And once we have an idea of what that $10,000 will go for as we vet that out over the next couple of months, being able to share a little bit more about that. So that's all I had. The next slide is a quick snapshot of our financials. And so where we're at, this is as of last month, but just a quick overview of what we have. The St. Paul Minneapolis Foundation, the majority of the money fits in terms of long-term investing. And then we do have that Deepi line as well at the top. And so you see all the different Pi names there. Again, back to the name change, really a part of the reason to change the name is to separate it from Pi, knowing that the Pi or the vision of the school district or the school buildings are really different, separate from what we're working on within the foundation. So you'll see all of those rebranding come along in the next couple of months as well.
Yeah, it's been exciting partnering with Natasha and new board members. We have young parents that are on this board, and it brought great, fresh, new ideas, different perspectives. And there's just a great energy about it. And it culminated too in the changing of the name of the foundation. Now, that's predominantly for marketing purposes to kind of pull away from Pi because we're truly a foundation. We're not really a partner in that. So it's a different thing there. Now, that, we'll have to do that through a process to change that on our 501(c)(3). And so we'll have, and we might need to hold with financials, but for the perspective of coming out and introducing it to the community, we see no problem in making sure that we have a name change to kind of garner some more attention and partnering with the district to kind of be on that website launch to make sure that we're out there in that piece. So I actually came up with an idea. I broached it in front of the Board, and we're going to wait until August. But there might, there's a possibility of a district communication to, I think the Board knows how I feel about free breakfast and free lunches. It's just to really communicate to our parents, say, I know you probably were budgeting before this. Obviously, you don't have to budget for it. If you still want to make a contribution in that budget format, the foundation is a wonderful opportunity for you to do that. And we feel that we could, really, that would be a good kickstart of creating some, oh, I didn't know we had a foundation too. Yes, we do have a foundation. And hey, I was, I was fully intending on paying for my kids' lunch. Maybe I'll just decide to make a monthly or a yearly donation, what I was going to budget for anyways, and make that to the foundation. So there's some good opportunities out there for us to breathe new life into here. And I've been just appreciative. We meet every month. I think it's the second Monday of the month. So it's been great partnering with these board members. It's been a really good journey.
And I'll invite any of you if you have any ideas for fundraisers for Deepi. We've had the golf tournament. We've had GAYLO back, sort of back a long time ago, I think. But what are some other ideas, some other things that you think we could do to kickstart? Kickstart, we'd love any ideas that you have known that we've done in the past before my time, or ideas that, things that you've heard of other districts doing in their foundation. We'd love to get the ideas, because we are just starting that journey now.
I'm really uneducated on this, like where the money goes, and do you have to spend it each year? And do you have groups come in and ask for the money? I don't really know what this is about, really.
Yeah, the goal of the foundation is really not to spend the money. It's to like, to build it up and to continue to grow. And the goal is to get to, you know, a million dollars in this, in this fund, and that we could then distribute interest out every year. There's a lot of different ways we could do it, and I think that's what we're still trying to figure out, is do we do, you know, more of a request where you come in, it's more of a grant request? Do we do, you know, we assess the needs and we go up and decide where that money might go. And so I think that those are things that we need to figure out as we think about the pillars, that we might be lathering up to those little mission statements to say, here's the type of things that we would go out and fund and support. But the goal would be that we would not spend, if we're going to spend it out this year, we'll come up with an amount that will come to full spending on an annual basis, and then there is one athletic role, so that we can support future needs. You know, one of the original intents of this was to support technology infrastructure needs in the school. And, you know, not to say that that's not still a need, but that's pretty needed in terms of where we were and what we might need in the future. And so, you know, we would like the idea of marketing some money every year to put it out into the community, into the schools, so people feel like there's progress for the money that they're giving. So that if you have kids in school now, you're not feeling like you're giving money for something that, you know, you'll actually never benefit from.
True.
So a lot of different ways to do it. Some foundations give out all their money. Some foundations give out very little. You know, I think we'll probably end up somewhere in between, but we're still establishing what that might look like. But I've heard a lot of, you know, a lot of Google searches.
So we have neighboring communities that have like $20 million or more dollars in there that would fund, right?
Yes, yeah. Or, no, it's crazy.
And it does fund stuff that kind of falls out of our budget. It's pretty cool.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, our goal is not, maybe our goal someday is to get to an ordinary level. You know, we have to put some hard work behind it. But we do think that there's a lot of opportunity for us to come in and help fund and close the gap on some things that are important to the district. And as we think about that rebranding, I think that will help us better kind of message that as well.
Cool.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is the consent agenda. That covers the board minutes from our last meeting, as well as all the financial affairs of the district. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some moved.
I have motion by Amy, second by Cory. All right, roll call vote. No, it's not. Sorry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. In my head, it was a roll call vote. All right, next up is resolution for the acceptance of gifts. All right. Whereas the Community Charities of Minnesota, $1,000 for Delano Elementary. Target donated $22 for Delano Elementary. Min Lakes Bank donated $50 for Delano Elementary School T-Ball batting stands. DIS Pi, $1,500 for Fall 2023 Eagle Bluff Bus Transportation, and $150 for MCA Breakfast. Music boosters, $100 for choir fees. And the following for the DHS Prom Committee, Cutting Edge Construction, Inc., $300. Lulu's Retail Therapy LLC, $50. Rebound Orthotics and Prosthetics, Inc., $100. And the Refoundry LLC, $200. These gifts have generously been offered to Delano Public Schools with the conditions listed above. Do I have a motion for the resolution for acceptance of gifts?
Some moved.
I have motion by Sue. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Jim.
Yep.
All right. Any further discussion? Now, roll call vote.
Board member Blake?
Aye.
Board member Tepa?
Aye.
Board member Gerke?
Aye.
Board member Shouse?
Aye.
Board member Roster?
Aye.
And board member Johnson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up is personnel matters. They're on the screens to the side. This is the hiring season, so there are a lot of people listed. A lot of community ed and so forth, pretty standard. Do we have a motion to accept personnel matters?
Some moved.
Second. Motion by Cory, second by Sue. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Administrative reports. Up first is Superintendent Shane.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. Appreciate you giving me the opportunity to share some updates. As I've been sharing with you over the last several months during the legislative session, I do believe midnight tonight is when the session does end. And so I would like to give you some updates of what we know so far. Basically, now, since I last shared with you, both the House and the Senate has passed the K-12 education bill after it came out of conference committee. So eventually, that's going to be on its way to the Governor's Desk. Here's what we know now in that proposed bill that was passed by both the House and the Senate. In the funding formula, we're going to see a 4% increase for the next school year and fiscal year '24, and a 2% increase in fiscal year '25. Also, a very key component to this is, this will be tied to inflation based on the CPI, which is the Consumer Price Index, starting in FY '26, a floor of 2% and capped at 3%. What does that mean for Delano? Approximately in that first fiscal year, about $725,000. So that's basically the increase of 4% per resident or per adjusted mar-
AMP.
AMP adjusted marginal pupil unit. And so that's an approximation in that. So in that first year, it'll be, that will be new money into the district. And then in fiscal year '25, that 2% represents for us, what does it mean to us? About $373,000, depending on what our pupil units will be in that school year. Another area that was a big deal for Delano was the Special Education Cross Subsidy. In that bill, there was $662.8 million that was set aside. That's to achieve the goal of moving over 44% of the funds that we use out of our general fund in order to fund special education. So that'll be in the first biennium, fiscal year '24 and fiscal year '25. What does that mean for Delano? Approximately $700,000. So that's $700,000 that we don't have to use out of our general fund to help pay for special education services. That state aid will come directly into that area, so that'll help with that. In addition, they approved an additional $821 million for fiscal years '26 and '27 to reach the goal of 50% of districts' cross subsidy would be paid for by the state. That's an approximately never about $800,000 for Delano. So that's, that's, that's a good thing, and we're moving in the right direction. That's very positive. We know that some of the money that came out of the fund balance that the state had been sitting on for the last two fiscal years, now they're actually putting money to work. And I think that's a good investment for not only Delano, but for education. Again, these are dollars that would not be taken out of our general fund to pay for special ed services. Also, though, in this area that we have some unknowns, and I've been kind of informing the Board that, yeah, this is all good news, but there's a lot of things that are happening that are being mandated, that we just don't know quite how, maybe we're going to have to take it out of that increase that I just covered with you. One is unemployment insurance aid. They dedicated 100, right towards the end, it was back, actually back into the conference committee. But what the original House version and the original Senate version mandated this unemployment, but did not fund it at all. When it went to the conference committee, they moved around their dollars. Now, remember, they're working within parameters of about $2.2 billion. They moved some dollars around to come up with about $135 million. But the district does not have any additional information out of how these are going to be distributed to districts, or how it's going to be done through payroll, identifying employees that could potentially qualify. And they could qualify as soon as the end of the school year. And we don't know, we don't really have any answers yet. This is all very new and very fresh. But again, we don't know if that's going to carve into some of those new dollars that we're getting from the state, whether it's in the cross subsidy or in the funding formula. There's also a separate area of special education unemployment insurance, a large percentage of districts' paraprofessionals, which is probably the largest employee group in districts that are hourly, that don't work during the summer necessarily. So they set aside $64 million per year, starting in fiscal year '26, and that goes on. They're planning to have that be an annual payment. Unlike the unemployment insurance aid above of $135 million, that's one-time dollars. And they think that can go out beyond fiscal year '27. My bet is, a little bit more aggressive than Mary's, I think it could happen over the next two fiscal years. Mary thinks maybe one fiscal year, but we'll see. We just don't know. But it is obviously not going to be money that will be laid out beyond fiscal year '27. The renewal of current voter-approved operating referendums, this would be something that Delano would be looking towards in the future. It authorizes a one-time renewal by the school board of an operating referendum previously approved by voters. So last fall, we approved that. Nine years from now, and things come to, unless something changes in the legislature, the Board could approve that one time for another 10 years at the same dollar amount plus the inflation. And how that would have to work, at least how it's come out of the legislation, is it requires the school board to vote and pass a resolution to authorize the referendum after holding a meeting and allowing public testimony. So you've done this from time to time. That's like a public hearing, and you've just done that, and anybody could come up and express their opinion one way or the other. But it wouldn't, if it was for the same amount, you would not have to go out for a referendum. Now, if you wanted to go out for additional dollars, that's a different story. Any questions on the update with the state? I know I went through that pretty quick. It's pretty detailed. There's about an eight-page detail, and I know MSBA is giving you some updates as well via email. We have lobbyists that are Mary's organization, my organization, that have been working very, very hard. We've been making our voices heard. Still, that we don't know is still some PELRA changes, which could change employee, for example, there potentially could be some changes within the negotiating processes with regards to student-teacher ratio, things like that. We just don't know enough information about that. The Family Medical Leave Act, as Mary mentioned during the work session, there's some change, there's some things that are coming down, but exactly, we probably need more information before we can get some clear direction on how we're going to be able to support that as well. And it could be, again, dipping into the dollars that we've received already. Just to give you a little bit of a precursor to what I'm going to share next month, I'm going to share with the assistants, we've talked about at the executive leadership team. We'll be presenting a strategic planning process for fiscal year '25 through '30. So we're going to be looking at the next five years. Next year is the last year of our current 10-year strategic plan. There's a possibility we could go out with a soft launch in the spring of 2024, with finishing up that planning process in the, in the fall. And so we're going to be planning and budgeting for that process, and I'll be sharing some more information with you next month. And with that said, any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Shane? All right. Thank you, Mr. Shane. Moving on, up next is intermediate principal Ms. Thompson.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. Thank you for having me here tonight to present to you on behalf of the Intermediate School. A very brief presentation for you, but don't let that fool you. We are very busy at the Intermediate School. Every day there's something going on. So basically, I wanted to share a little bit about a follow-up on our professional development for the month. So we had our final two-hour late start of the year. And traditionally, we've spent that time to do some transition work into next year by reviewing our FAST data. So we take some time to look at our FAST fours and then make our placements for next year. And we look at our intervention groupings and our schedules so that kids can be placed appropriately to start the year. There's always a little bit of movement then in the fall when we do our FAST test again, but that's a really productive time. We had some vertical teaming time. Our fourth graders joined the third graders, and we had our sixth grade science teacher go up and spend some time at the high school science teachers as well. So it was really just kind of a day for teachers to get what they needed to start to transition into the next year. We have been really busy at the Intermediate School, lots of events. But I really would like to recognize our social worker, Nicole Goman. She spent a lot of time organizing a lot of fun things for kids, but also some really meaningful things for kids around Mental Health Month. And we have seen, personally in my office, I have seen an increase of kids struggling with mental health to the point where it's just, it's, it's hard and it weighs on this mom's heart. And so I just, I appreciate the things that she's done in that area. We had llamas walk past the classroom windows today. We had, we've been having therapy animal visits. We had dogs. We had bunnies. And today, there were therapy llamas. So if you didn't know such a thing existed, there are-
I saw them this morning.
-three of them. And they were-
There was almost accidents.
Groomed, and I mean, they were something to see. So that was really fun. Yep. We also had Jake Olson arrange for us to have a speaker. We haven't had a speaker for our whole building in quite some time, ever since COVID. And he was really passionate about getting a speaker in for our kids. So we had Richard Gary come, and he presented a presentation called Permanent and Public. And he was just really emphasizing with our kids that nothing you do online is private, and just always be so careful and aware, not only of what you're posting, but who you're interacting with. He did two separate presentations. He did one for our sixth graders, because obviously they're dealing a little bit more and at a more serious level with those issues, and then also one for our fourth and fifth graders. He was a really great speaker. I was nervous. He was going to talk for about an hour, and I went, woo! But he was super engaging, and the kids did a great job listening. And I think they really had some good takeaways from that. And then finally, a lot of our focus has been wrapping up our MCA testing, as well as our FAST testing. And that was just a fast and furious few weeks of getting all of the testing done. Overall, we're really pleased with our results at the Intermediate School. The teachers did great work this year, and the students really shined on their assessment. So we're feeling good, and we're celebrating the end of the year. Any comments or questions?
Any comments, questions?
Great. Thank you.
Off next, Mr. Voight.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. It's a pleasure to speak with you on behalf of the high school. As you know, I've become accustomed to recognizing some achievements at the start of my reports. And I'd like to congratulate the Orange Crush Robotics team for receiving a $5,000 STEM pipeline grant. And that was actually handed out to us by, or handed to us by Congressman Emmer. And the Pharma Group is the group that actually sponsors that award. So he visited us on Friday, and we had a bit of a demonstration by our Orange Crush Robotics team. And so obviously, they're going to put the $5,000 to good use for their program. Our site-based leadership team has been busy these past several months proposing handbook changes, of course, which you've heard about this evening. Also, we are looking at how to do conferences differently in the coming year. And some of you have probably received an invitation to take a survey, to provide some feedback just about the way in which we facilitate those conferences. We're obviously looking to facilitate effective partnerships with our parents. And so we want to look at how we can partner better and do it more efficiently. So if you have not yet completed that survey, I'd like to ask the audience to participate that. In that survey, the link is on the latest Tiger Weekly. Our site-based team has also been working on setting up our school climate survey. This coming Wednesday is a very busy advisory time for us. So on Wednesday, our students will be taking our school climate survey, and they'll also be voting for our next student school board representative. So that kind of covers our site-based leadership team work. Just some miscellaneous things. Staffing update, you mentioned, obviously, it's hiring season as you reviewed the personnel agenda. We have hired for next school year a math teacher, a special ed teacher, and a social studies teacher. We're still looking to fill positions for seventh and eighth grade art, as well as a school nurse. I do not yet have FAST data to kind of briefly share with you. I'll be certain to do that in June. Just today and tomorrow, actually, and maybe Wednesday through Friday, we're looking at getting some makeup testing done for those students who missed kind of that spring window. And with respect to our SST, as well as, you know, reviewing FAST data and things like that, our SST team met this morning to talk about our intervention rosters. Obviously, our intervention courses are integral into making, or I should say, providing students to be successful in our programs. And so we have guided study programs. We have compass programs, extended reading support, as well as Math Core. And so our student success team met today to figure out which students would be offered opportunities within those classes. So that takes me to the end of my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone has about the high school.
Any questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Voight. Up next, elementary principal Ms. Schultz.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. Pleased to speak with you on behalf of the Elementary School. Brief update as well, we had our last site-based meeting, and we sort of wrapped up those handbook revisions. And then we also are starting to kind of review our committees versus our curriculum teams, see if we can streamline those somehow. We have a lot of meetings, and that's feeling pretty heavy. But some we need to just have, and some we can probably match up a different way. So that feels a little bit more productive and not redundant. We're also trying to streamline our agendas. Sometimes those get a little bit lost in translation. So we've kind of identified that as an area of, how can we have something that's housed, where everybody can go back, if there was something that was sort of decided or discussed without having to say, hey, can you send me that again? I don't have it. So just kind of looking at some ways to make things a little bit more efficient and effective for our team there. Staffing update, we have hired quite a few people already. We are still hiring four more positions. And we have a new position, the art and tech integration teachers. That will be brand new to the Elementary School, with Jenna transferring into the district media role. She's going to do great, by the way. She's been awesome at the Elementary, but we've kind of seen this as an opportunity to shift Jill York into that media position like the other schools have, and then take what was really important, that Jenna taught our kids through that media time, and partner that with an art teacher, because that has been something that we've really wanted. It's been on the wish list for a while at the Elementary, so we're excited to bring somebody in for that. So it'll be about a 75% art, 25%- So it'll be about a 75% art, 25% tech integration, building in some of that time with the Imaginarium and coding and STEM aspects. So that will be new and exciting for us there. Our MTSS update. We wrapped up our 15-month cohort with MDE just this last week. So that feels good, and it feels great to kind of come away with a nice MTSS handbook draft to get us going next year at the start. And our SST is working on some resources and putting together kind of a hub, if you will, of like tier one, these are the interventions; tier two, these are the interventions. If they aren't in an intervention block with our Tiger Time intervention teachers, what are the classroom teachers doing with those kids that need that? What we found in some of our SST meetings is that it's, teachers come frustrated because something's going on that's not going well. We want to give them resources, but then they leave, and they have to go digging and trying to find, and then make the copies and print. So we're trying to support them in a way that feels a little bit more like, okay, I can do this. It's manageable without getting bombarded with all those other pieces. So I think that'll be good. Monica has just shared some preliminary data with us last week and today. So we haven't had a chance to kind of go through that for MCAs and FAST at quick glance. Looks great. Pretty pleased with that. But June, again, will be a time to kind of look more at those hard numbers and what we maybe want to focus on for next year. And we had field day. We had a great turnout of volunteers. It did not rain. It was like the one non-sunny day of the week, but it was great. First grade concert Thursday, sleeping on the roof on Thursday. Third graders are heading to DIS.
I like how quickly you just went over that.
Sounds like you guys caught it, though. The third graders are heading to the intermediate school tomorrow to check out that place where they're headed. And we have the all-school picnic on the 31st.
Any questions or comments? Any questions for Ms. Schultz?
Brady?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Shane would like to return quickly. Stole your name tag. R.I.P.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, May's school board meeting is the last school board meeting that our student-school board reps attend. And we always take this time to recognize our senior student-school board representatives. A couple of weeks ago, Lila Ford was the recipient of the school board scholarship for serving her two-year term as the student-school board representative in her senior year. As most, every school board student representative in their senior year, they do apply for a scholarship to the Minnesota School Boards Association. I did receive a letter from Kirk Schnindewald, and he says, "Dear school board member, student-school board member, thank you for applying for the Minnesota School Boards Association Student School Board Membership Scholarship." Unfortunately, Lila did not receive that. But this letter, the judges wanted you all, you and all the applicants, to know that they were impressed with your contributions to your local school board, with your work in the community and school activities. You should be very proud of your accomplishments. The MSBA board wishes you the best in your future and your education. Enclosed as a certificate of appreciation for serving as a student-school board member. So I have that certificate here, and I will be presenting that to Lila in a moment. In addition to that, we have a certificate on behalf of the school board and myself as superintendent to present to Lila. And I started this tradition last year. Lila gets to take her nameplate home with her and keep it, and I would expect to see that during open house. You have that with all your other certificates and accommodations. So let's give Lila a big round of applause.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, look at how professional. Up next is business manager Mary Reader.
We just went over the preliminary budget for next year at our work session here. And looking at the current year budget, we're deficit spending in the unassigned fund balance by about $645,000. That's down from what we originally were budgeting even over the last couple of months. But the biggest reason is because of the amount of interest that we're taking in between our investment and our checking accounts right now. Last year, we got $5,000 in interest. This year, we'll get about $300,000. So I had no idea that inflation was going to hit our savings that much, but it did, and it's grown, so very good. Positive.
Trip to Vegas, Ms. Reader?
No, I'm unlucky. So I would lose it all, but anyway. So I'm anticipating our unassigned fund balance to be about 13% at the close of this year. And then with what I had done, our preliminary budget, I was very conservative, a little lower on the gen ed increases compared to what is now being approved by the legislature at this time. I did $2.5, $2.5. It's now coming in at 4 and 2, so about half of a percent, or 1% off. So I will redo the budget before it gets approved as the original in June with some of these new revenue amounts in there, as well as the cross-substances for the special ed. But I'm also going to take into account some anticipated expenditures that are not funded by the state, just so they're built into there as well. They're guesstimates at this time, because the state doesn't even know how this is all going to play out for. So just know that I anticipate we'll be at 12% at least at the close of next year as well, which is, that's what our fund balance amount needs to be. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Reader?
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Community Ed with Mr. Edson.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Thanks for having me here to talk about community ed activities. Follow-up from our last meeting is, in regard to TKC, we're over 280 children in our community who will be receiving childcare services through TKC. That number keeps growing, but we are staffed accordingly. So we were able to take everyone off the waitlist and continue to add. Also, follow-up from our Touch a Truck event. We have numbers that came in. It's a free event. It's a community outreach event, but we do ask people who register. We had over 820 register for that event and estimate that we're over 1,000 people that came to Delano that day. So a pretty cool event. It was too windy for the helicopter to land, so that might have been a disappointment, but a ton of people were there. They also collect freewill donations, and I think we've talked about this before, where we are designating those donations to go towards the building of a playground at Community Ed. They collected almost $700 on freewill donations at that event as well. We opened up registration on May 2nd. Our coordinators came up with about 150 different offerings this summer. And within a three-week period, we're over 1,900 registrations so far. So really good numbers with a lot of good programs and a lot of people participating, so that's fantastic. And then update on activities. Most of our sports are getting to section play, so we're getting towards the end of regular season. Section placement starts beginning for a lot of these, so we'll kind of find out where we're seated. Track starts off. They're going to be in O-R-N-O. Boys and girls golf goes to sections next week. Boys and girls across seeding will come through soon, so we'll see where we're placed there. Baseball section play, replacements are coming soon as well. Now, we're going to be hosting sections at our tremendous ball field in town, so that'll be great to watch both our Tigers play as well as others. And then a couple of things to note is, Boys tennis had an exciting first-round upset of St. Michael-Everville. So that was fantastic. And individual sections is this week in Coon Rapids. And then softball. They, their conference champs went 10-0 in conference play, 16-3 overall, and earned the number-one seed. So they will be hosting section play tomorrow here in Delano, and they will host the first two rounds. As long as they keep winning, they'll host the first two rounds, and then semis and finals will be in St. Louis Park. So. And then when we're talking about legislation, a couple of things have come through. There could be some modest increases for Community Ed. Our funding is relatively meager, so those increases don't amount to much. But there are some changes. We have offered classroom driver's education for a number of years. So typically, anywhere between 150 to 200 kids come through Community Ed to take classroom for driver's ed, which currently, right now, is three hours done in a classroom. So it's typically three hours per night, 10 sessions. And now the legislation has changed where that is going to be handled more like, if you go and get like your Boulder registration for your Boulder permit, where that can be done online. It can be self-paced. You still have to complete those hours, but the structure is going to change dramatically. So, you know, having a seventh general who recently went through this, I have twin daughters who'll be going through it this summer in the classroom format. As we move forward, you're going to see that change. So as your children start turning 15, and they do their classroom behind the wheel, many people are going to like to do this online, and that structure is going to change. And I know that our instructors and our local organizations that run driver's ed know that this is a change. They've kind of anticipated, but that legislation most likely will pass shortly, so. Any questions regarding that? Okay, and thank you.
Thank you. Soon as I hit save, I'll find out who's next. Student board reps. All right, so over at the elementary, I know that administrators and students are both happy to have testing over for the year. There's an end-of-the-year picnic coming up for all of the grade levels, which kids are really excited about, as well as a school countdown with letters of the alphabet. A lot of excitement in the school. Kids are excited for summer, but also really enjoying all of the fun things that they're doing. The first grade musical is coming up, and then all of those students get to share all that they have learned throughout music class this year, which is really fun. And then overall, students are excited for the year to finish up and are excited about all of the fun activities. And the third graders are excited to move on to the new school next year. At the intermediate, administration is working hard to organize the schedule for this busy month and towards the end of the year with that all coming up, focusing on mental health as well with service animals. Wish we could have a llama at the high school. It sounds amazing, and kids are really enjoying that. And I just think it's super important for them to be learning all of those important lessons about how to take care of themselves and be smart with electronics and all those things. Students are looking forward to field trips that have happened this month and are coming up. And then sixth graders are both nervous and excited about going to the high school next year, but they feel ready.
Delano High School students feel that administration's been doing a fantastic job keeping them on the loop for communication stuff, for scheduling, and everything else next year. And on most important terms, we elect, on Wednesday, May 24th, we elect our new student-school board rep for the 2023-2024 school year. So there's two contestants for that. And it's pretty slim this month for the high school.
Yeah, administration and staff. I know we have robe distribution this Wednesday, or yeah, this Wednesday for graduation and getting graduation activities all planned, as well as the all-night grad party and spring fling, where kids get their yearbooks this Friday, which is really exciting as a yearbook editor. And so kids are chugging along. Any questions for student board reps? Not too much now. And thank you, Lila, for the last two years.
Yes, thank you all.
Moving on to board reports. Masiko.
So I attended the Masiko board meeting. I'll be brief. It was a pretty standard meeting. I will say that Melissa gave kind of a general update around the U.S. Supreme Court changed, or ruled that parents can bring student disability legal claims against districts directly to federal courts. And that's a big change. And so they're just kind of thinking through what that means and how that will be handled across the seven-member districts. And then, of course, the other big thing was there was a couple of impacted staff because of some of the licensing thing that I've been talking about, where the state rules us to have that specific license. They had been getting variance, so they were, they had to be non-renewed for their contract, and then they can reapply. And if nobody else with that licensure applies, then they could potentially be rehired. But it's, again, we're already seeing some of the impacts of people who are fully capable of doing the jobs just being impacted by some of these licensing requirements. So anything else is listed in the attachment.
Any questions for Amy? All right, thank you, Amy. And next up is Wright Tech Center.
I attended the Wright Tech meeting. Pretty brief meeting, to be honest. It's kind of an end-of-the-year budget-type meeting, but they're very happy still with the open house that they had. It was very well-attended, and the potential enrollment next year is up. They're very excited about this new heavy equipment operation program that actually has a waiting list. So trying to add some new programs, as well as keep the standard nursing and welding and everything that's the law enforcement, keep those full. So. And yes, the attachment is in there.
Any questions for Mr. Reed? All right. Moving on to old business. Tonight, we have the second read of Policy 631. We went over it last week. Or not last week, last month in the board meeting. Matt, do you have that pulled up for everyone, or I can? This is the selection of Media Center materials and policy. I know we had a lot of discussion around that. Do I have a motion to approve the second read of Policy 631? So moved. Motion by Sue. Do we have a second? Dapal, second. Do we have any further discussion? All right, very none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
One nay. Motion passes 5-1. And under new business, we have approved the bread and milk quotes for the 2023-24 school year.
Yep, we went out for bid again this year. We had in the contract last year the option to just renew with each of the vendors again for one more year. And we did ask, Kemp's, of course, was saying yes they would, and as well as Panigold, but their bids came back quite a bit, or their prices came back quite a bit higher than what they had been originally. So we opted to go back out for bid again, or quotes again.